I'd like to call the April 23rd Special Meeting in order at 6:00 or more PM. Can we salute the flag? Please make that go. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, the Constitution under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a roll call vote?
Sure. Chairman Papaholtzer?
Present.
Vice Chair Candela Rama?
Correct.
Secretary Siena?
Here.
Dan Bosomo?
Here.
Vincent Mase?
Unmute Vincent. Vince, unmute.
Okay, I got you here.
Thank you. Marcy Anafrio?
Here.
Cynthia Rice?
Here. Here, did you hear me?
Yep.
I did.
Okay. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion.
If you turn down the speakers.
Can I please have a motion to approve the April 9th minutes? Thank you Tracy. Can you guys hear me? They can't hear me.
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Cindy, can you hear me?
Relocating.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you Tracy. Can I have a motion to approve the April 9th minutes?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, we did not get a copy of the corrected February minutes, so we need to put that on the agenda for our next meeting and get receive a copy of the corrected minutes.
If um, if you didn't get a copy of the correct minutes, then you can't accept a minute as the incorrect minutes. You have to withdraw that then.
No, no, no.
That was the April minutes.
That was the April one.
February. We, we received the April minutes. And they were correct. It was the February minutes that were incorrect. And we, we didn't approve those yet. So what, those are going to come next month within your packet and we'll approve them then.
Okay.
Okay? The superintendent has received a retirement resignation from Mr. Richard Young, social studies teacher at North Branford High School, effective April 23rd, 2020. Can I please have a motion? To approve his retirement?
I'll, so moved.
Can I second? Discussion?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Perfect. Tracy, do you want me to move so you can do your distance learning or? No, I can talk about it. Okay. Share the screen. So Tracy Wooton, Director of Curriculum and Instruction will provide the board with an update on the district's uh, distance learning initiative.
District, district learning initiative, um, obviously is a result of COVID-19 and the situation that schools are in. By executive order of the Governor of Connecticut, this is our attempt to make sure that the continuity of learning is not disrupted or disrupted in the least possible way throughout the district. When we began April, excuse me, March 13th, um, this was a supplemental learning plan. From there, it went to a distance learning plan to make sure that students were given the academic and educational experiences that would suit them as best as we could. So this plan is really the second adaption. There are three major changes in this plan. The first one is that our teachers have begun doing more interactive or dynamic interactions, which are almost live interactions. They are usually done through video or audio. At points when that's not available to students, they can use a chat feature. And teachers are recording much of their lessons. So that students, regardless of whether or not they're able to access the lessons at that time, have it.
Tracy, I'm sorry, do I have a question? Have we assessed that all of the students in North Branford districts have computers and have internet access?
So we have.
Okay.
We, we have one-to-one at the high school, one-to-one at the middle school. And we have ensured that grades two through five have Chromebooks.
Okay.
And K-1 have iPads.
Okay. And did we make sure that they have internet, internet access at home as well?
Is one family, we did, we sent out a request, um, both through phone and computer. Because obviously people didn't have internet, it may be difficult to get that message through on their computer. We did send them out, we got responses from two families.
Okay.
One was that they didn't have a, didn't have a device to use and the other was they did not have um, internet access.
Our tech department has worked with both families and is getting that resolved. Okay. Can you just keep me in the loop on that because that will definitely impact education. One child is one too many.
And how does that?
So just I'll, I'll echo uh, those comments that, that Tracy just had. I worked with Bruce Williams when we put this out and immediately uh, we were able to find hotspots in carriers and we entered into an agreement in the district. Um, assumed all responsibility financially to make sure for, over the next several months that they would have internet access. So we are 100% right now with all students able. And then any.
Even the two Tracy mentioned.
I mean the two. And then any students who have had complications with computers, within 24 hours, the tech team has met, swapped out or repaired all computers. So at this date, we have well over a thousand computers um, out in the district. Uh, so we, we really hit the ground running and I want to acknowledge the tech team and and the administrators for making sure that there's real strong communication with parents if they are frustrated. We also have set up a helpline where parents can go on and ask questions. Uh, and the tech team will respond within hours. Uh, so it, it's really been seamless and we're hoping we can continue on with that success.
Let's keep our finger on the pulse of that because this is so crucial, um, that everybody is participating. Like if a teacher sees a kid dropping off for more than a couple of days, let's make sure we're doing outreach so we don't lose these kids. Um, because without eyes on, it's really hard, it's hard enough to make sure they're.
So I, I want to back up a little because I really jumped in the middle of the plan.
Sorry.
No, but you kind of reminded me to start that because not everyone has access to all of the documents and the conversations that we've had at the district for nearly a month now. And one of those is, one of the first outreaches obviously was to make sure that everyone had devices. Make sure that everyone got printed packets that were the beginning of our plan and then move on. But part of our plan, this is a 20-page document, it is the second piece that went out, the communicate, second communication that went out throughout the district for teachers and administrators as well as central office staff to see what that, what we were doing and to make it, ensure that every student has a consistent opportunity um, to have hot, access to high-quality curriculum. One of those things is that there are, each school has their own directions and their own protocols if a student is not seen in those dynamic interactions for two days.
Okay.
So they, they all have a chart.
Absolutely.
And there's a tiered chart of interventions. They start with a teacher, counselors, all the way to administration. And Scott has, the superintendent has also had conversations with parents that make sure that everything is working as it should be to that, so that students can access everything.
So attendance is taken daily in every class and it is charted through Power School. And just one data point.
Excuse me Scott?
Yes?
It's very hard to hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry Beth. Uh, so attendance is, is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
You kind of sound like you're in a cave.
Okay. These are, it's the speaker. So what's happened is that we have, um, we take attendance daily through our Power School and that is recorded. And then, um, as Tracy mentioned, any student who, uh, does not log in for, on two days, there are parental phone calls that are made and the follow-up. And that's been very successful. I was just going to share at NBIS, uh, just two days ago, uh, with 400-plus students, we only had three absences that day, which is really unheard of. Because if you track, you know, all of our schools, we're usually much higher than that. But it's very interesting when we start looking at different, um, points of, of this new teaching model. Our attendance has been outstanding.
I'm going to give some credit to the parents on that as well.
A lot of credit to the parents because they're right on them encouraging them.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll echo that. We had a meeting with a state representative for the middle school, for our sick warrant that we're working with the state with. And they were astounded that our attendance was that high.
Good, okay.
So we, we are very proud of both the teachers and the parents, all families, guardians. It's been an exceptional response to the distance learning platform. So as we started to go through, taking surveys and, and interviewing teachers, speaking with students and surveys, they went out to parents, students and staff. We realized that the most important thing was the connection that students have with their teachers. This was not unbeknownst to us. But what we didn't realize was the, was the impact of five minutes of seeing a teacher's face in the middle of the screen and the students around them through Zoom or Google meets, what that would have on a student's motivation. So it definitely has had the impact that we wanted it to and obviously every teacher hoped it would have. So part of our plan is that teachers will go live and have dynamic interaction consistently throughout the week. That means different things in different buildings. It could mean virtual instruction where a teacher is actually teaching. It could mean a morning meeting in a kindergarten class. It could be small group instruction during Reader's Workshop at TBEES. There are a number of different things. We've worked to make sure that the interact, interactions are developmentally appropriate for the age span. And the teachers so far, um, it's been a week since we've been back from April vacation. And again, we are getting rave reviews from parents, students and staff alike.
The teachers are being very flexible and very supportive of the kids. I have one in the intermediate school and one in the high school. So I can only speak to those two schools. Um, but they're definitely, um, working with parents and with students because I know I'm having a very difficult time understanding Google Classroom and the classes and the assignments and making sure everyone's on top. And you know, there's teachers that are doing fun things. Like I know my daughter for music has to send in a recording of her voice, which is, is like, you know, pretty fun for her mom. And they do miss their teachers and they do miss their friends. So that interaction is great.
So we're encouraging in that type of interaction. What we've also done, and this is within the packet, so board members and others that have the packet and we can make this available. In the appendix is a set of, of responses and questions from the federal government on FERPA and student privacy. So we absolutely do have, um, the, we are allowed as a school district to videotape those classrooms as long as they are not presented publicly those tapes. And they're not because you go through Google Classroom, which is password protected. So that the students that can't make it on, for whatever reason, they do have access to any instruction that happens during that time. So anything that's pertinent to learning is being recorded and then made accessible to a student at a later time if they cannot attend that dynamic interaction portion of their lesson. And again, that was very important for us so that we could make sure that every student does have access to the same high-quality education. One of the other things that we talked about in our plan was that especially for our younger students, parents are very involved. And without their support, this cannot be successful. And even without their support and helping instruct the child and give our children support in their homes, we can't be successful as teachers or as a school district. So we've expanded office hours. Uh, our teachers are opening their communication live and otherwise to parents and students alike for at least two days, from 2:00 to 2:30, um, multiple times during the day, as well as once or twice a week, um, in later hours for stu, for teachers, excuse me, for parents that are still working where they cannot access teachers during the day. So that was the second part. It was all about that communication and connection because again, you know, this is a district that truly believes that connection and personal relationships are the way that students are motivated and one of the most important aspects of educating the whole child. The next piece that we did was realize that again, through feedback on our surveys and through interviews and reach, you know, our, our campaign of reaching out to parents and students realized that it is difficult for many families to juggle two or three children at home working in distance learning. So what we've done is incorporated a flex day into our schedule. And that's Wednesday. So what that day is, is an opportunity for students to catch up on work that they have to do. It's an opportunity for students to, to check in with mom and dad and maybe not have mom have to be teaching or dad have to be teaching them that day. For elementary schools, it's also an opportunity to have those assignments from your special teachers that were really difficult to fit into, into the day otherwise, where we have math instruction and reading instruction. So those Wednesdays provide opportunities for children to decompress and to really work and have that flexible opportunity while having the structure of school still there. For our teachers, what we're doing is then helping them establish what exactly does having digital learning mean for us as a district? Meaning that we all recognize that we could not take what happens in the classroom and get to the other side of the computer and make it all happen.
Mm-hmm.
It's not magic. It takes work. It takes our teachers looking at what would have been taught and picking out the essential learning that we know students need. And to start to rearrange their curriculums to make sure that our expectations are reasonable and to make sure that students have everything they need now and in the future. Regardless if that future means next year going to college or going to another school, being promoted to a high school or being promoted to sixth grade or even just going from first grade to second grade. We need to ensure that the students have everything they need to be successful. Those are the three really main points of our plan and what's changed since the beginning. We keep working based on surveys, feedback and the data that we're collecting through our student achievement and state. Obviously the state, um, the Commissioner of Education and the governor provide us with information. At least once a week, we're on a conference call with them and we take that information and then are able to customize what that means for our district and work with our teachers and families to make sure that our students are getting everything they need.
Hey Mary, can you make sure that the North Branford Public Schools continuity of learning plan, Distance Learning 2.0 is attached to the minutes, please? That way if anybody wants to see it, they can just download it from the minutes.
Trace?
Yes.
How, um, how are you finding, um, this working for kids with 504s?
So I have to, to really give Suzanne Wright and the director of, and supervisor of Special Services as well, Nancy Bianchi and their whole team, um, really accolades because they are doing it unbelievable. They were the first ones up and live. So when we looked, when, as soon as we found out that we were going to distance learning, they had mobilized a platform that was approved by the government for privacy for specifically students with special needs, as well as all of their teachers. Um, were online within hours of, of our decree going to distance learning to make sure that they could service all of their students.
And I, I just want to echo what Tracy was saying with Suzanne Wright literally being, you know, hands-on with her team and combining the distance learning tech piece with the packets and, and, uh, everything that would, you know, accommodate the needs of our, uh, stu, identified students. And they've just been phenomenal with reaching out to them and making sure with phone contact, with interactive, uh, with mailings and things, just to make sure that, uh, as we said before, no child, you know, slips through the cracks. That help, Carolyn?
Yes, thank you. I had unmuted, sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I, I just want to, in, in closing on this, this portion of, of the Distance Learning 2.0, this was a great deal of effort by the administrative team. Tracy spent countless hours, um, formulating what I think is a very, very effective uh, plan that is detailed, that is rigorous, that really speaks to all aspects of something that we haven't been, uh, forced to do before. This is the first time for, for all of us. And, uh, we're growing as we go. We had an admin meeting, uh, before we came over here tonight and solicited input from all the administrators and they had the opportunity to talk about uh, some of the, you know, the trials and tribulations and successes of things that have been going on uh, in their daily interactions. So, um, kudos to all of them, our coaches, uh, obviously our teaching staff who has just been unbelievably dedicated to our students. And I think parents are really understanding, wow, I knew it was a lot of work, but boy, I had no idea. And I know a lot of the parents, even at the high school levels, are getting involved with their students' um, work and curriculum and seeing what, what they're up against and what they're doing. Um, and so far, so good. And we'll continue to monitor as we move through and, you know, we know our next benchmark date is May 20th. We're waiting to hear from the governor and from the commissioner to see where, where we're going to be. And we, we're hopefully going to hear something in the next seven to 10 days. So, and we'll keep you certainly apprised of any changes or additions or modifications to our plan.
And again, on behalf of central office and the administration of each of the buildings, we are eternally grateful for the help and appreciate the work that the teachers have done as well as all of the families in North Branford.
Martha, can we move on to the budget update?
Sure, for the current year?
Current year.
Yeah, so, uh, we continue to monitor, um, our budget really not has mu, not much has changed.
A little bit louder, please.
Not much has changed since our last meeting. Um, but we continue to monitor and we're working on tightening up our projections for June 30th. Um, and we're just taking it day by day.
So Martha, moving forward when we do, um, budget, can you do me a favor? I mean, I know today was an abbreviated meeting, but just make sure that, um, we have the grants listed as well so that we can, um, we can have like the reg, the regular large budget and then all of the sub-grants broken out so we kind of, we're tracking them as well.
Absolutely.
Um, and for, I had a few questions for next year and some of it came up last night and we were talking about it last night. So one of the issues and, um, not everyone could hear Martha and I because we were in the same room, but we were talking about diesel. And we pre-purchased diesel last year and we're about halfway through. And then Martha was saying, yeah, we're on a contract. I go, oh, well, when does the contract end? And she told me August. And I said, well, why does the contract end in August when that's not the end of our fiscal year? She goes, I, I didn't make the contract, but it's something I would like to rework and I have a few other ideas on how to get diesel. So Martha has some really great ideas, how to do things a little bit differently. And Martha, can you just give us some ideas of that diesel on like, it was just a fluke, it came up because we were talking about buses. Um, but I just wanted to hear some of your ideas because you, you had, you were, had some concrete things right then and there.
In the, in the district that I came from, um, we would purchase, uh, diesel off of the state contract bid.
Mm-hmm.
And we would pay New Haven Harbor rate, um, for the price of fuel on the day we ordered it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and one year, we actually tracked, uh, all the prices that we paid for the diesel for that year versus what we would have paid had we signed a contract. Um, and it came out to be that we actually did better by going off of New Haven Harbor rate rather than, um, signing a contract. So that's something that we'll look at in the future to take advantage of.
Okay.
The state contract bid instead of signing a contract to pre-purchase.
Okay, great. Um, the other issue I wanted to talk about was, um, I, I've heard a lot like, do we have savings or is there any surplus in our current budget that can be either rolled over or that we got from the pandemic? What does our budget look like now? Are we a break-even budget? Will we have some surplus? I mean, I know we have some savings due to the busing because of field trips and sports and, um, was it special education was the other one, Scott? There were like three areas?
There, there's a, a variety of things that, uh, obviously with the shortness of the school year, that we are ahead in certain areas.
Yep.
So the conversations that Martha and I have been having were revolving around the ability to carry 2% of the existing year forward towards next year. Obviously, these are going to be very mean, difficult times. And that would afford us the opportunity to, uh, really safeguard the potential for, you know, uh, future crisis, future hard times.
And what dollar amount is 2%? Although I could figure it out.
Just, just over 600,000.
Perfect, okay.
I, I do want to echo just the part about the diesel and I know there's a lot of conversation about transportation. So currently, we are, um, sitting on 49,000 gallons of diesel that we pre-purchased and that date ends in August.
Yep.
At that time, we are contractually obligated to purchase 90,000 gallons of diesel. So what we're working with right now, uh, will be working with our attorney on what we do with that diesel. For us to hold that diesel, I would either have to transport it or they will store it for me at seven cents per gallon.
Fifteen cents.
Fifteen cents, excuse me, per gallon or $7,000 a month. So we're looking at our options of selling, retain, excuse me, retaining or storing elsewhere.
Okay, so and you'll keep us updated on?
Absolutely.
What we, what's most fiscally responsible? Okay, got it. Um, and the last question I had related to budget was, there was a letter sent today and I wasn't quite clear on it. Um, it was about updating the software with the town, um, which I of course thought was a great idea, but I just really kind of got the letter and I didn't have any background to it. So of course I was like, hey, town council, hey Board of Ed, this is a great oper, opportunity to collaborate. But I don't really know what the history was and why I got that letter. So I just want some clarification, so.
And I'll just segue you to, so that, I sent that out. Uh, if you look at the date, it was, um.
February 19th?
February 19th, I had sent that letter out. And, uh, from the previous year, we had purchase orders that were outstanding. And in that letter, we asked that approximately $76,000 and change.
Yep.
The earmarked for the software purchase between the town and the Board of Education.
Okay.
So that's something that we're going to talk about tonight in the meeting. It's something that we feel is very important.
Okay.
Uh, and we want to just have a good conversation about that.
Okay, perfect. It, sharing the same software would be really great for communication between the town and the Board of Ed, also for collaboration opportunity.
And then it's long overdue, both sides, the, the council has met with Martha, with the vendor.
Okay.
They've had numerous conversations and it will make us much more efficient moving forward.
Okay. Do any board members have any comments about the budget?
I believe, it's Marcy. Um, I believe that the software and sharing the same software was the recommendation from the study that we had done and we paid to have done. I think that was their first, uh, recommendation.
Blum Shapiro, that's correct. That was the first recommendation.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Shauna, going to the, the 2% and where they're expecting, are they, are we expecting more than $600,000 savings this year? I mean, or, I, I know it's still in the school year, but
So it's, it's up to.
We're not going back and there's, you know, is there a, a projected number that you think we're going to be at? If schools stay out for the rest of the school year?
It's, it's up to 2%. So, you know, as we close out April and go into May, um, we're going to have a much better idea of where we stand with that, that number. So certainly anything that we could get up to that point or over would be a huge assistance moving forward.
So we.
But we can only save 2%. We can only carry over to 2%. So if we, if there's more than 2%,
It's returned to the town. It's returned to the town, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And so we'll, we'll keep this updated monthly. So we, as we know where, where school's going to fall, we'll keep this updated monthly and Martha will have a more up-to-date number as we move through. Let's move to North Bramford School Food Service update. Scott, do you want to give us the update on the distribution of bagged lunches?
I do, thank you. So if you're not aware, the district has been providing lunch services to students over the last several weeks. And when we first started this program out, we were doing a very simplistic bagged lunch out of MBIS. And we were probably reaching 30 to 35 families out of that one location over the first week and a half. We then shifted gears and decided that we would service all families in the community for any student under the age of 18 years of age. And the response has been overwhelming. Just yesterday, we served over 200 lunches between North Bramford Elementary School and Totaka Valley. So we opened up two sites. It's very easy for parents to come in. Everything is done online. They preorder what they want. They pull in, they come in. Everything is ready for them to go. So we have split staffs working with Michael Auger, and that has been a great success. He's actually changed the menu. He's offering hot meals now as well that are fan favorites of our students. So I know he's doing quesadillas. He's doing other things that families can bring home and just quickly heat up. And we're getting great reviews. And we're really thankful we're able to do this, to help the community, to help those in need. It's been a great convenience for our families.
Have we done any assessment to see if there's any parents that aren't able to pick up lunches or that kids that might have been at high risk that aren't getting lunch?
We've continued to do that, and it's interesting because the numbers just have continuously-
Okay, they're growing.
Grown. So they're getting our communication. We're not able to deliver because of obviously the risk of infection and all of the guidelines. So we're sticking to what we're able to do with handing out food and this and that. We're not able to transport and bring to a home. But we're doing a lot of communication, what ifs, if we had, you know, a better system to help.
Are any families saying that they can't pick up that are in need?
We have not. That's the good news. We have not.
We have not, okay. If anything like that happens, please let me know because we will have to address it. Because right now, we're in a very, very much of a crisis with kids being neglected, abused, domestic violence going up, people not having enough food in their home, and you can't worry about your schoolwork if you're hungry.
No. And, you know, the nice thing that we've been able to do is we've coupled with the Senior Center. And Michael Auger is working with the Food Pantry and has made many donations to the Food Pantry. So any of the food that we had left over that was perishable was immediately brought to the pantry. And now any of our frozen foods that are under subsidy from the government that we have in excess, we're working with them to make sure that they also are connected. Now, we also talked about, excuse me, piggybacking some of those deliveries. If we do get a family that can't get to us, we would put it on the van when we're delivering senior food and we would bring it to the student's house.
Okay.
So we have a plan.
Okay, there's a plan. That's good.
Can I just ask a question too on like on Fridays? Do we provide them with extra food for over the weekend?
So what we've been doing, we're looking at going in two-day intervals. So on a Friday pickup, there will be a meal in there for Saturday.
Okay.
So that's, that's the plan. We're going Monday through Friday now, but we're thinking of going Monday, Wednesday, Friday and doing two days at a time so we can affect the weekend as well.
Right, I think ACES is doing like on a Friday, they can pick up like a bagged lunch for like Saturday and Sunday. So they're trying to get, they're trying to get families through the weekend, the complete weekend.
Yep. So we're, we're looking at that.
Okay, because that would be nice to have, you know, Sunday covered in there.
Sure.
Mike, great job. Thank you very, very much. Yeah, I mean, this is such an important thing, so.
Yeah, and I'm always super happy, so.
I'm very happy to know the food is going out there to some families who need it.
No, and I really, I'm not doing the job that I should be in telling how great the outreach has been by our food staff and by Michael, working with the Senior Center and Tony Delizio, who is the chef at the Senior Center. And he's really been amazing stepping up and making sure that she's had enough product and being able to do lunch and dinners for them. And we're making sandwiches and assisting them with that. So it really talks about community and the heart of community and what's so important.
Well, thank you, Mike and team. Job well done.
Thank you.
Michael's online? Oh, Michael Auger. I see you now. Thank you. Really, really good work and it's very much appreciated.
Michael, you'd have to unmute.
You're very welcome. I just wanted to clarify, we are, on Fridays, we are expecting to hand out quite a few additional meals than we have. If you look at our numbers for meals handed out during the week, Fridays has been our biggest, our biggest day. And we anticipated that.
Great.
Excellent.
Great.
What was nice also, we were able to provide meals through the April vacation, which I think made a big difference for everybody also.
Yeah, that was great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So the Board of Education will review and decide whether to accept an additional 10 cents per meal related to healthy food certification. Accepting the additional funds obligates the Board to extend our commitment to most food that is sold on campus, even after the end of the day. We have participated in the program since 2016-2017 school year. Have, do you have all of the motions, Board, or do I have all of the motions?
No, you, you have. I don't have them.
I have all of them. So these are our options. And we make them every year. We need to decide if we want to continue with the 10 cents healthy food. At this point, I think we should continue with the program, but I would like to have feedback from the rest of the Board before we move on to making motions.
I agree, we should continue with it. Right, do we even have a plan if we don't, to make up that money?
We don't have a plan. I mean, there is no plan. It's, they better buy more, right?
Right, so I guess, yeah.
Buy more Twinkies or whatever, yeah. Does anyone else have any input? Or I'll start making, I'll make the motion since they're in front of me.
Or just, just tell me what motion you want and I'll move it.
Thank you, okay. To certify that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under the jurisdiction of North Bramford Board of Education and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standard published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut Nutrition Standard during period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or by non-school organizations and groups.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
You sure can.
Thank you.
Chairman Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo?
Yes.
Vincent Mase?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Right.
Scott, am I doing the food exemption and the beverage exemption?
Yes, all, all three.
Okay.
They're coupled together, yes.
To allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut Nutrition Standards during the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The sale is at the location of the event and the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Chairman Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo?
Yes.
Vincent Mase?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
To allow the sale to students of all beverages not listed in section 1020 to 21Q of the Connecticut General Statutes during the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, provided the following conditions are met. The sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The sale is at the location of the event and the beverages are not sold from a vending machine or school store.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Chairman Papa Holzer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Candelaora?
Yes.
Secretary Sienna?
Yes.
Gianna Bosamo?
Yes.
Vincent Mase?
Yes.
Marcy Anafrio?
Yes.
Cynthia Rice?
Yes.
Let's move to the last item on the agenda, the North Bramford High School renovation project discussion. I just wanted to see if anyone had any questions about the proposal of the high school. At this point, Town Council has requested that they get through the budget before they look into the new school because it's a deep dive for them and they want to make sure that they have all of the information. I've sent over a nice fact sheet for them, but I don't know if they have any additional questions at this point, and they, they very well may. There has been a preliminary analysis done regarding bonding and the impact it would have on the mill rate and taxes. I do not have that information yet, and the Town Council has to date not been able to review it, just because they're, they're really crunched right at this moment for the budget. But we should have more news about the school and how it's moving forward by our next meeting, if not beforehand.
We would like to have a special meeting with the council once we get this information to further discuss as soon as we can.
That's right. They're going to drive the date, but I've been in communication and there have been emails that I've been copying the board on it so that we're all on the same loop. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure, Vince.
There's a Town Council meeting after this.
Yep.
Do you want on it as well?
It's just budget tonight.
It's budget tonight.
It's a special meeting just for budget.
Do you want us on it or you don't want us on it?
It's up to you. They're going to vote on our budget most likely this evening. We don't really, we don't get to speak. So if you want to be on it to hear it, if not, I'll definitely give you the information tomorrow. I don't know what your timetable's like. It's not, it's not a mandatory thing. I'll be sitting on it and I will be able to filter the information to the board.
Okay, just wanted to know that.
Thank you. Visitors impressed? We don't have any.
Hey, Shauna, before we close it up, can I just do the good of the board thing?
Sure, you could do a good of the board thing.
So, yeah, it wasn't on here. So I just wanted to do a little shout out to Mr. Young because he has been dinner conversation between Christopher and Ava, because Christopher's now home doing online courses at Dartmouth. And he will be profusely missed in our household. It's really cute listening to those two bonding over certain teachers. And Mr. Young has been at our dinner table conversation and he will be missed. And he kind of did a little shout out when I went to the back to school night. And he was, I, one thing that really struck me as phenomenal by him is he was very sensitive as to Ava being the youngest of the family and really tried to identify her as her own person, not as Christopher's younger sister. And when he ever said that to me, that's a good teacher. So he is going to be thoroughly missed.
Oh, great. Thank you for sharing that, Carolyn. It's really nice to hear the positive feedback, too, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Shauna, do we have a date for the next meeting?
You know that? I don't have a date for the next meeting, but it's on the calendar.
Okay.
And I'll send it out. I'll make sure I send it out. It's, it's not in front of me, so I don't have it.
Yeah, usually it's on the end of the agenda.
I know.
It should, it should, it should be May 21st.
I'm going to tell you right now.
I just want to make sure it was the same as-
May 21st?
Yep, May 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Location to be determined.
Here.
Bye-bye. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night all. Stay healthy.
You too. Thank you.
Didn't go over 100. Little problem breathing, but all, but all the other symptoms that you've seen on TV. I even had a little, kind of like a chicken pox.
Okay, thanks.
Kind of thing. On my, not a lot, just a couple of them. But that was, that's part of it, too.
Where were those? Were those on your eyes? People were saying that they're getting size, like on their eyes from it.
No, I had my stomach. That was in my stomach and my back.
Oh, okay.
Hey, Bob, we're, we're all set on the, on Totaka TV end here. So I think we've got everybody, Vince Marino, Anthony Esposito, are you on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Michelle Pollak, I know I heard and saw you. You're okay? Great. Okay, so Bob, I think we're ready.
We're all set. Okay. This revised budget workshop of the Town Council, Thursday, April 23, 2020. And also, we're on Totaka TV, a Facebook Live at 7 o'clock. I want to start with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
United States of America, the civil public, and the way of life. Okay. Michelle, roll call, please.
Mayor Big Leone?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Here.
Councillor Angeloni?
Here.
Councillor Diamond?
Here.
Councillor Judy?
Here.
Councillor Fornin?
Here.
Councillor Gold?
Here.
Councillor Paternoster?
Here.
Councillor Policia?
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, let's start with fiscal year 2020, 2021, a budget deliberations. First one is, A, is general, general government services.
Okay, so last night, we had, we had requested from the police department to come back with us with recommended cuts for $10,000. And Chief Halloran has come back with his recommendations. So I would like to make a motion to decrease account 4210.310, police department equipment by $5,000.
Second. That was Tom.
Rose made the motion, Tom seconded. Do you have any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to the chief. I know it's always hard to make cuts. And we asked him, we gave him a night to make it, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd like to thank him, too. Thank you, thank you, chief.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to at least see where we could find it in the budget to make the cuts. And that'll help out a lot. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, chief. Okay. Michelle, you want to take your time?
With all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Okay. Okay, the other recommendation from Chief Halloran is to decrease account 4240.320 from communications, other contractual by $5,000.
Rose, is that 4220 or 4210? Or 4220?
4240 was in your, was in the email.
Okay.
Okay, was that a motion, Rose?
Yeah, did you want it from 4210?
No, I just, the other paper I have here says 4210. That's all right.
Yeah, it's 4240. I typed it wrong. It's 4240.
Thank you.
So Councillor Angeloni, the first motion for the $5,000 decrease was 4240.320.
4210.
The first motion that we already did was 42- 10.310? 4210.310 was the first motion that we voted on. Okay.
Okay.
And this motion is 4240.320.
Okay, thank you. Who's that?
Tom.
Tommy.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion on that? No. All right, okay, Michelle.
With all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Okay, thank you.
Okay, staying on the general government side, I would like to make a motion to increase the general fund surplus applied to increase it by $300,000. This would put it at a level of $650,000 for 2021.
I'll second that.
Rose, can you explain that, please, what it is you're saying?
So in the, last year we used $600,000 from the general fund that was applied to the budget.
Yep.
And this year, the manager proposed to bring it back down to the $350,000 level.
Yeah.
Which we've been running periodically. We've had some years at 600,000, we've had some years at 700,000. So my proposal is that 350 up to 650. So that would increase, we would need to add another 300,000 from the general fund.
So Anthony, just confirm my number. If I remember correctly, you were at 8.6. We're talking about going.
Yeah, I'm having a really bad time here and I lost everything so far. We had 8.5 where we were at June 30, 19. And 650 would not be detrimental for this year.
It will leave us at what percent of this year's budget, Anthony?
Standby. Well, we also got to figure out if we're taking any fund balance out for capital before I can give you that complete number.
We do have some proposals for capital out of fund balance.
Well, well, let's take it one step at a time. Give me the percentage for this.
Yeah. People are cutting it and out, so I'm not getting any of this, just to let you know.
Yeah, I'm adding terrible causes, Joe. I missed all the motions so far. Hang on.
I think there's some people out there that need to mute. If everybody who's not talking can mute, I think it might make it a little better.
I'm getting there, Joe. My computer's locked up. Hang on. Oh, goodness. And then. 14.49%.
Please, thank you, Anthony.
Sorry about the delay. I'm having internet problems.
So you got the motion. It was Councillor Angeloni moved, seconded by Councillor Gold to increase the general fund surplus by $300,000?
No, to take from the general fund surplus.
Fun balance.
We're gonna, we're gonna take 300,000 from the general fund surplus.
Well, that's completely different. Okay, got it now. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that? No. Okay, Michelle.
With all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, Rose, do you?
Motion so far?
The first two motions were for the, it was for the police department.
Okay.
It was, it was 5,000 from account 4210.310.
Okay.
And 5,000 from 4240.320.
Beautiful. Okay, and then was the fund balance, one of the next one?
Correct.
Beautiful. Thank you. Oh, he's moving again. Oh, my God.
So do you have more, Rose?
I don't think there's anything else from the general from item A.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to item B, capital improvement plan.
Okay, so on capital improvement. Scott, did you, do you have a more accurate number on the Jerome Harrison air conditioning cooler tower compressor?
Uh, yes, I do. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
So, Bob, welcome back.
Thank you.
Um, I'd like a do-over. When I came in last night, I was not aware that my capital request totaling $658,104 had been reduced down to $150,000. So if I was a little bit out of it last night with trying to figure out where that came from, I was not aware that it had been cut out. So that being said, I'd like to know what my, I can see that now that I have the sheet in front of me, $150,000 is there for gas lines that have been reduced out and are gone now. We're looking at a couple of other projects. I want to go back and revisit the software for the town hall and for central office, something that we put a great deal of energy and effort in. I had authored a letter February 19th to Mike Paulus and in that I had returned $76,672.80 from the prior year towards that purchase, thinking that we were going to couple the monies together from the town side to be able to make our efficiency better in our finance department. We paid Bloom Shapiro $25,000 to come up with a plan for consolidation and the first recommendation they made was for us to do this. So that being said, if it was 144,000, I've returned 76, almost 77,000 for that. I would like to then take, if I do have 150 sitting in capital, monies, extended monies to make that happen. Any monies that are left over, I would like to then put towards my air conditioning project down at Jerome Harrison. So I do have an estimate for that unit or two units. It would be approximately $98,000 to do both of them. So if my math is correct and I have 150 plus my 77,000, what I'd like to do is I'd like to get that software back on the table to talk about. And then I'd like to earmark those other monies towards the heating and, or not heating, but the cooling system at Jerome Harrison. That's far more important to me than paving any entrance ways or any parking lots. So that's where I'm at with that. If you're asking for my priorities and my recommendations, I did not know that everything had been zeroed out about, except for gas lines and conversions at Stanley T and T U V S. Those are not my highest priorities now, nor is paving any parking lots right now. If my number is there, I'd like to take my $76,000. I'd like to direct it towards the software package. I'd like to take any other existing monies from the 150 to make sure that town hall gets online. And then the difference of that, I would earmark towards the chiller units in the tower. Any shortfall in money there, I would look to find out of this year or next year. I think that that software package is too important. The town, we've been talking about this. We had joint meetings with the finance director, with my business office, and it was unanimous in that, you know, it was something that was going to make us more efficient. It was going to make us transitioning that if eventually we did move into the same location, we'd be way ahead of the game by doing this. And we had a professional study done that we paid significant money to, to make these recommendations.
Right, and we're waiting for a Bloom Shapiro to come in and speak to us on that, to explain the whole package that they sent us.
I don't need any explanation on the packet. Alls I need to know is that there's $144,000 to do this software. We know that that was their first recommendation. I'm saying to the council, I directed and earmarked $76,672 sent down from the 18, 19 school year. I have 150 in capital that's sitting there right now. I'm saying to you, I will take the additional money out of my 150 and fully fund that software package for the town. Whatever's left from that amount, I would then like to direct towards the heating and cooling towers. And any shortfall there, I will take out of this year's budget. I will find that money. Those are my highest priorities right now.
Well, what was presented on our capital was the 144 from the Board of Ed, but then an additional 85,000 on the town side.
Okay, so.
So is it $225,000?
I would ask Anthony for the total cost of that. I thought we were splitting it and it was 144. Total. Total was 144 per the Rhode Island price that we found.
Correct.
So I'm saying I will pick up that 144 with my 76 and with my difference. And then I would push that, the remaining monies towards that heating, that, I keep saying heating, that cooling tower, excuse me. If that goes, I have to shut the school down. And I need a crane to get in there to replace that. It's 20 years old. It's leaking. We patched it for a number of years. Now is the time to do it.
Right, that's why we asked last night about it and.
And I, and I do, and it was in, and I don't, I do want to go back to it being in 17 and 18. And it was under heating and it, under upgrade central air conditioning.
But it didn't, it didn't come over to the Town Council side.
In 17 and 18, it did. It was in our plan that went through. It was in upgrade central air in 18 and 19, again.
In the budget book that we got for department requested, it was not in there.
And in 19, 20, I'm saying what we sent down with a price, it was in last year for 47,000 as well. And then obviously this year, it, it is in there for 47. So we're, it's kind of like the, the numbers when I was here last night. I had no idea that there were zeros in that entire column of my capital until I found out today. And that the two projects that were selected were gas lines for Stanley T and Totucket. I, which I have no, on my priority list, that they have zero impact on our efficiency and on students. That's not something I would do. So my, my recommendation is all paving for the Board of Ed is off the table. And that we look at that system, which I do have a quote for that was done today, which is about $98,000. I have that $76,000 that I sent down to town hall. I notified Michael on February 19th. And CC, our board chair, Martha and Anthony Esposito.
We got the letter.
Okay, you got it today from?
No, we had it, we had it before.
Okay, so I, I, I wish that was discussed last night. Those are my highest priorities right now. And I'll say it again, I am looking, I will take my monies and I will fully fund for town hall that software package. That's how important it is for, for us as a community, us as a team, us moving forward.
Okay, so Anthony, so what is, what is the true cost? The 144 plus the 85 or just the 144?
No, the estimate that we had, as Scott mentioned, from a town in Rhode Island was 144. I was putting 85 in to couple up with their number, assuming that you guys are going to allow them to roll that balance back to get us to that total of, you know, 150, 160, to leave a little cushion in there.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that.
This is something that's going to make us more efficient and it was something that we unanimously agreed on both sides of town. It was the first step from the Bloom Shapiro report that we paid very good money for. I think we're foolish if we don't take advantage while we have the opportunity, we can do the training and get this up and going and activated as soon as possible.
And that was a priority of the Town Council too.
Absolutely.
So the one, so it's 145? It is.
144, I believe.
Well, just round it off because that 76,000 already went back into the general fund. So.
Right.
So it doesn't make any difference. All the money has to come out of general fund for it.
Correct.
Is that right, Anthony?
You are, you are correct. So if you put it back in and put the whole 144 or 145, 150, right in the fund balance column, it'd be the same effect.
Right, okay.
Anthony, a question on Scott's request. Do the council need to take action first on, on just a motion to the remaining balance of 76, 67280?
Well, the way Rose has played it out is she's basically letting that flow back into fund balance and we're going to assign the whole 144 out of fund balance towards it. So it's a moot point.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to fund the software upgrade for $144,000 and this comes from the fund balance.
I'll second it.
Motion. Motion made by Rose. I'm sorry, who seconded?
Mine did.
Marie.
Seconded by, by Marie.
He needs one.
Any, any discussion? No, we have a vote?
Okay, so to repeat that, Councillor Angeloni moved, seconded by Councillor Diamond, to fund the software upgrade for $144,000 from the fund balance.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
So, moving on from there, if my math is correct, Anthony, if that was the number of 150 that I had in there, that 76 was over, do I have approximately $80,000 left in capital?
Well, we just kind of negated that 76 by putting the whole 144. If you want to reapply that 76, then that will require a motion of the council to take a different track with that then, instead of letting it flow back to fund balance then to reassign it to capital, but we're not sure how that works.
Anthony, you could, you could leave it like that. Rose, you're going to move on the cooling tower, which is coming. which is coming out of fund anyway, so that'll eat up whatever's left there, plus.
Yeah.
So, so whatever the difference is, if that could earmark towards that, and then I will find the difference.
No, you don't even have to.
Yeah, so.
Hey, Mike, I'm in a generous mood tonight.
Oh, wow. We got a couple other ideas for you.
Well, I know you do, but I'm, listen, I'm doing this now like kids, cuz it's win-win for both of us.
Yeah, so I'm gonna make a motion to, um, fund the Jerome Harrison air conditioning, cooling tower and compressor at one hundred thousand dollars from the general fund.
Second. Ron.
Uh, motion, motion made by Rose, seconded by Ron. Any, uh, other discussion? Whenever you're ready, Michelle.
And again, that was Counselor Angeloni moved, seconded by Counselor Goad, to fund the air conditioning system for Jerome Harrison at one hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain?
Okay, and we have one other item under capital, and that is on additional funding that is required for the N B I S brickwork. Um, the preliminary bids are in. I know we, we don't have those, they're still vetting those and, but according to the numbers that came in, and what Anthony has shared, is that we need, um, a hundred thousand dollars more for the N B I S brickwork. So I'd like to make a motion to provide additional funding for N B I S brickwork for a hundred thousand dollars from fund balance.
Second?
Okay, motion, motion made by Rose, seconded by, I didn't catch that.
Marie.
Marie?
Yes.
Okay, seconded by Marie. Any, uh, further discussion?
Rose, that's to add on to the, to the current, um, bid.
That's to add on to the, that's to add on to the current funding that we have already set aside for it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, and on that score, uh, for the bid, we're going to rework the bid, uh, and, and throw it back out. And also consider the, um, construction manager for that project, given the size of it.
Why do we, why do we need a construction manager? We're not building anything.
I disagree with a construction manager.
I mean, the, the estimates were around fifty thousand dollars, and I'm not so sure that we need a construction manager for, it's just brickwork. It's not building anything.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I, I don't have that expertise, uh, to, to oversee a, 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 a project like that. I don't wanna put it on Fran. Uh, it, it just seemed like that, that for that magnitude, we want, we wanna make sure this project gets done right.
Michael, can I just ask, uh, the, the, obviously the impact on, on our school community? I know you were looking to do it this summer. Is that still the plan? What is the total cost with that additional hundred thousand to do that? And what's the breakout between the middle school and the auditorium? I know there was, uh, work to be done with pointing brickwork and other things, but, um, is the lion's share of it for the pointing of the brick, or is it for the spraying of the ceiling?
No, I think, I think the majority of it is on the brickwork for N B I S. And the, and the, the thought process was to start there, uh, first, and then get to, uh, the auditorium. But it, I think with this, um, I think that we're closer to a six hundred thousand dollar project. Um, but I'll, I'll have to check those numbers again. But I think there was some, some issues with the, uh, the specs themselves. So we wanted to, you know, again, trying to, trying to avoid any mistakes and fine tune the specs and have another, have Tom Cowell and a few other folks take a look at that. Um, and, and make sure that we're putting out a good, good, good spec and get a good product. Uh, but again, uh, it, it's gonna be that oversight. And, uh, I, I'd just like to have that ex, extra layer of, uh, uh, of insurance, so to speak, with, uh, with the contract. But if, you know, I'll figure, I'll figure something out, uh, if, if that's not the case in terms of doing that.
Was, but prior to the hundred thousand being voted tonight, wasn't it close to six hundred thousand before that? I thought it was like five eighty-five. So is it now six eighty-five or something?
Well.
Mike, this is, can I interje, for a second?
Okay, yeah, Michelle, Michelle, go ahead. She's purchasing, Michelle Knockwood. You have those numbers?
Hi, yes. Given the estimate was around six eighty-seven. Um, I've asked Tom Cowell to look at the specs, and he's talked with the vendor to review them because there was a lot of questions at the last minute when we put it out to bid before. And unfortunately, it was just before the deadline, when the proposals were due. And we could not respond back quick enough to answer all the questions that came in. The specs for N B I S were not as detailed as the architect did for the auditorium. And felt that it was better to put together a new set of specs and put it back out at the same time, along with the construction manager. Um, the architect for the auditorium gave a proposal for him overseeing both the auditorium and N B I S, but it was over my bid threshold of seventy-five hundred. So that's why we put out an RFP for a construction manager, and then we collapsed the two at the same time. And as Mike said, you know, you need somebody with the knowledge to oversee the project. If you're talking a seven hundred thousand dollar project, I'm not sure who has the expertise other than hiring the architect to oversee his own work or his own specifications.
So it's closer to seven hundred thousand?
For N B I S and the auditorium. It's the two of them together.
Right, combined, right.
Combined, yeah.
Have we ever, have we sprayed? Well, it's a, it's a moot point now, but, okay. I just will need to know timelines and things for, obviously, if it's planned this summer, we, we'll have, obviously, there won't be anyone there, so I don't know what your timeline is. Obviously, we'd, we'd be very sensitive to when we could do it.
Yeah, I'd like to get it back on the, the May meeting.
Correct. With the additional, uh, funds to pay for this, we could get it to Town Council, the final specs. And I'll review those with Tom Cowell and get it into the May meeting, either the first of this, hopefully the first meeting. And then we can get it back out by the end of May. And hopefully work to start Ju-, early June to mid-June.
But I remember when those specs, that bid spec came before the council. And we were very specific and asked if this had been reviewed and if the specs were, because none of us had the expertise. And we were told that what Capasso had sent us for, when they did just, uh, an estimate for us on N B I S, that those were pretty detailed and were good. And that's what the specs were written off of. So this delay, this delay is really, you know, should not have happened.
Well, when you have contractors coming to you and asking questions for more detail, it's our responsibility to put out additional addendums answering all of those emails or questions. And this one contractor submitted, uh, I think, five questions, like three days before the bid was to open. And so there was no way you could get all the answers done in the same amount of time and get it done properly. So it was our decision to collapse the bid and try to get better specs and put it back out again.
Council was never informed of any of that.
Correct.
Well, it's, it, it, it just not an, not a complete, uh, process if we can't, if we can't respond to in a timely manner. So the only option we had is to collapse the bid and bring it back to the council and try to rework the specs for a better product, or get a better, uh, specifications out there on the street to reduce any kind of confusion as you move into awarding, uh, so that they're clear, as clear as we possibly can be.
But I, I, I would have the same concern that Scott has in regards to the timing of it because the way that the bid went out and everything else with it coming back, it was geared so that they could start right when school ended in June. And now if we're gonna put it back out, I'm not so sure that this process is gonna work. But I guess we'll have to wait and see.
How technical were the questions that he asked, the five questions?
I'm sorry, what?
How technical were the five questions he asked? What did he ask about?
Oh, I don't have them in front of me, but, you know, they were something that we needed answered.
Maybe we could've figured something out. And I, I hope they didn't put an architectural manager bid out without the kind of.
So, did we, did we vote on the hundred thousand dollars fund balance into the?
Not yet.
Okay.
Sounds like we're kind of in limbo here.
So a question for, for Scott, in, in terms of the timing, if it goes out, uh, and, and they can start in June on the N B I S project, uh, to get that out of the way or start there first and then work to the auditorium, does that help in terms of scheduling?
I, I, I don't know, uh, the time span of the project, how long it's, it's estimated to take.
But if, if, if school were to open and they were working on the auditorium.
Well, obviously, the safety concerns with not only staffing, but, you know, I, I'm sure they're gonna be up on the roof if they're pointing and, and doing roofwork. It, it, you know, that's something that we'd wanna stay away from having any school students around. I'm sure there's gonna be staging everywhere. Um, we have buses coming in in there. We have community events. We rent that auditorium out for, um, there, there's a lot of what-ifs. If, if we don't hit the timeline and we, I guess we don't rent the auditorium, and that, that, that would be my concern.
Scott, this is Michelle. When I had asked you before. Scott, when I had asked you before if it went into September for the auditorium, you didn't think that was as big of an issue as them starting over on N B I S first?
I, I, I don't recall that, but I, I, I certainly, you know, we've done roof jobs at schools in the district, and we've never had students there, and that's with people on the roof. This is gonna involve staging, wrapping around buildings, the community rental of the auditorium. Um, again, I, I would, my recommendation would be to do it with, with the least amount of, um, disruption from the general population being there. Certainly students, I, I'm not comfortable with. Because we share busing, uh, between the middle and high schools, so kids are crossing there. Um, about, about a thousand students cross through, um, to get on buses and leave. And it, it just, that, that's, it's not ideal.
Can they be, can the project be put off to next summer, twenty-twenty-one?
That's not ideal.
I would, I would suggest get the bid out as soon as possible and get it back. Well, let, let's just get off this subject now. Just get the bid out and get it back as soon as possible. Put a earlier closing date, um, and let's, uh, let's just approve the hundred thousand dollar that we have on the floor now.
I agree with Mike, and if you can get that done in time, I think it would be, it would be better to do it this summer than go through another winter, because I think the freeze and thaw was part of the problem that we were having, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
So we're talking about going up a hundred thousand, but we're not even sure of the price right now, right? We don't have an idea.
We have preliminary prices now, and that's, that's why we're sure.
We do have prices?
Yes. So that, that's why it's on the floor. It's, I think it's been a motion and seconded, and we'll just call a question.
Okay, any more discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay. Do we have any more, uh, capital improvement plans? Okay, let's move on to, uh, see, debt, debt service.
Okay, so last night it was discussed about the savings in debt service that was not shown on, um, our budget, which was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And, um, you know, Anthony gave us the explanation as to why, which I agree with. He's trying to build up, um, a, a balance so that when bonding issues come up in the near future, we can try and keep debt service, uh, at a steady level, uh, so that we don't have big spikes. But, uh, given the budget year that we're having right now, I would like to make a motion to increase the debt service savings by a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Rose. I didn't get the second.
Mike.
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 And the amount was one forty?
A hundred and forty thousand, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Rose, you have anything else?
Not on debt service.
Okay, let's move on to education.
Okay, so on education, I think one of the things that we're struggling with, Scott, is, um, the amount of savings that you think that you will be able to save from this school year's budget, given the conditions that were presented to us, um, with the COVID-nineteen. Um, so do you have any best guess estimates of possible savings coming from whether it's bus contracts, fuel, utilities, outside placements?
So, as I mentioned, I mentioned in the presentation that my, my special ed placements are by name. I, I have no, um, I have no excess there, I, you know, so we're, we're gambling on, on that. Um, I did have a conversation with Daco. They have a model that they put out to several districts. And it would be, uh, an eighty-twenty split, um, for drivers during the academic day of, of them coming off unemployment, with us getting twenty percent back to the district or moving that forward as a credit next year. I don't know what that would be right now. Um, they were gonna send me a data sheet on that. Um, so that, that's the transportation piece. The fuel piece, I have forty-nine thousand gallons of diesel that I'm sitting on. That contract ends in August. I am being charged fifteen cents per gallon to store that, or equivalency of seven thousand dollars per month to sit on that, knowing that I have ninety thousand dollars, or excuse me, ninety thousand gallons coming in August as well. So I'm in the process now of looking at, if I have to move forty-nine thousand gallons of fuel, of diesel, do I move that to New Haven and rent, uh, a tank to put it in? I don't wanna run the list of, of sitting on it and, and losing it, or I'm gonna be selling it back at a cost lower. As you know, right now, the diesel costs have dropped significantly, and I purchased that for over two dollars a gallon. So I'm wrestling with right now the monies that I can come up with, um, you, you know, to creatively handle that excess fuel. I've thought of speaking with Daco to see if they wanna purchase the fuel from me. Um, I don't know, I don't think we have enough tank space. I know we don't with the public schools. I'm only running two tanks right now. T V S is full. Um, I have a full tank there, and I have a tank in the ground I have to remove that has eight thousand gallons in it. So that's my dilemma with fuel right now. Um, what I'm looking for, and I'm, I'm, um, hopeful that when we talk about, um, excess monies this year, the two percent ability for the non-lapsing, um, account ending this year, where I could take two percent or the equivalency of over six hundred thousand dollars from this year's budget. or the equivalency of over $600,000 from this year's budget and move that forward towards next year. We did that a few years ago. I do have money in that 1%, but this gives me the opportunity to offset significant cuts or the crisis that we're in. The second piece is the excess special ed cost grant. In the past, it's been over $200,000 returned to the town. This year I'm going to be at $121,594. That would be additional monies that I would look to earmark towards next year. So if you couple those two, that's a significant amount of money.
Oh, so if I heard you correctly, we could go to 640 on, under statute 10-248A, the 2% fund.
Yep.
And you're confident that you would have, you would be able to reach the 640?
I, it's up to the 2%. So could I get up to that point? I, the brakes are on and we'll do everything we possibly can and we're, we're thinking we can. We, you know, we've measured out, we've costed out, no spring sports season, no coaching stipends, no fuel costs there. So I, you know, I gained, you know, about $150,000 there. So moving from that forward, looking at excess cost grant, that additional money and, you know, our ability to, you know, in moving forward, that's our goal is to be able to get to that, up to that 2%.
Okay, but Anthony, can you just refresh me? How does the excess cost grant work? Because they're funded at 100%, so if there's more, that just stays in the general fund surplus?
It's a unbudgeted revenue item because we never know what the number's going to be.
Correct.
Historically, historically it's gone both ways. Nine times out of 10, it stays in the general fund as revenue. There have been occasions, however, where the council during the budget process has made a motion that that money would go to the Board of Ed when it came. It's kind of gone both ways.
So. The statute is pretty specific about each expenditure from such a council being made only for educational purposes and each expenditure should be authorized by the Board of Ed for the town.
But, but the, but the, but I believe that the town has to, to make the motion to say, yes, that can.
The 2%, that's correct. So the council would have to approve our ability to earmark up to 2% to use for educational purposes only. Obviously it would be towards next year, knowing that any amount that we cut into if it's personnel would have to be replaced the following year or obviously reduced down to that the following year.
Right. And then, but on the, on the excess cost grant money, Anthony, do, can we make that motion like later on when we know exactly what that amount is? That we, that we give it back to the Board of Ed?
My, my excess cost grant right now is 121,594.
For the current, the current.
For this year. I, I've received one check for $68,000 in February. In May, I will get the difference and it will be up, it'll bring my total up to $121,594.
Okay.
And it's down from years past because of special education, transportation costs and our numbers of students that were outplaced in the funding formula.
Okay, so, but so the special ed cost grant is not part of the 2%?
No.
That's in addition to.
That's in addition. That's correct.
But that would be a separate motion from the council, correct, Anthony? To, to give that back to the Board of Education?
Yes. Yeah. And the years past when we've done it, we've done it with the ensuing budget year. So as you were contemplating the action on the Board of Ed budget, that's when you gave them next year's money ahead of time. We could certainly do this year's as well. I don't know which, I thought we usually do the budget year we're working towards. That would be the motion that we've made in the past, that anybody that comes in in the 2021 year would go to the, go to the Board of Ed directly, but that's certainly your call. You could do the current year instead or whatever one you wanted to do.
Well, I think since Scott knows what the current year is, and what did you say that 120?
121, 594.
594. And then the 2% would give you approximately 640,000?
643,715.
Okay. All right. So I would like to make a motion. So I would like to make a motion to allow the Board of Ed under Connecticut General Statute 10-248A to have 2% of their current year's budget put into the 2% fund, which would total 643, up to 643,715.
Second.
From Dom. Okay, motion was made by Rose, seconded by Councilor Zampano. Any further discussion? Okay, okay, well, go.
Okay, to clarify, Councilor, Councilor Angeloni moved, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano, to allow the Board of Education under Connecticut General Statute 10-244-8 to have 2% of their current year's budget, which would total up to 64, 643,715.
Just a correction, it's 10-248A.
8A. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone to abstain?
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion to allocate the excess special education funds back to the Board of Education from the 2019-20 school year in the amount of $121,594.
Second, Ron.
Okay. Motion was made by Rose, seconded by Ron. Any discussion? Did you get that, Michelle? Yours?
We'll see. So I have Councilor Angeloni moved, seconded by Councilor Paliccia, to allocate the special education fund in the amount of $121,594 back to the Board of Education. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
You have more, Rose?
Um, well, yeah, I guess it's been, been, now that we just gave the Board of Education roughly $760,000 out of their request of $960,000. My motion would be, let me see, let me see, the request of. My motion would be to increase the Board of Education by $250,000 from their current funding level, which I believe is 32,185,714.
I'll second that.
Which would give, that $250,000 would, would give him all of the money that they requested in the budget of $959,000 for this year, between the two actions we've just taken. Between the 2% fund, the special ed education excess cost grant and giving them $250,000. That would fund his total, the total increase that the Board of Ed has requested.
I'll second that. Okay. Motion, motion by Rose, seconded by Walter. Any discussion?
Okay, so I have Councilor Angeloni moved, seconded by Councilor Coe, to increase the Board of Education by $250,000 from the current funding level, which would provide all of the $259,000 as requested.
Now it would fund, the, the increase, the Board of Ed increase was 959,000.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions?
Michelle, it's Ron. Just so we're clear, the motion, Rose, was the motion 250 or 259?
250.
Michelle, you said 259 before. Do you have 259 or 250?
I think she meant 959, Ron.
Yeah, I have that the increase was for 250,000, which would be to the Board of Education proposed increase of 959.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there's no confusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Rose?
Um, I don't have anything. I don't know. Anthony, do you know where we're at on the budget?
I think right now you are at a .08 mill increase.
Okay, so what would, um, what would the numbers be that have to get filled into the motion?
You need another 100,678 to get to zero.
No, I think we're good. I mean, I am, I, I'm not, everyone else can speak in, but.
I'm good. I'm good. Yeah, okay. That's pretty close to zero. Okay, so we're all set?
I just want to thank the superintendent for, you know, stepping up to the plate and giving us all this information tonight and making the job a little bit easier for us.
I, I, I want to echo what I said before about our teamwork and, you know, I know emails have gone out. Information has been shared over the last 48 hours and, you know, our spirit is in the total community, the, the crisis that we're in, moving our kids forward. And I certainly appreciate when we can do business like this and it, I believe is a win-win for all of us. So thank you to the council and thank you to my board members and chair for doing what's right for children and emphasizing how important it is in the community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
For the board members.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, glad you're back.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. I'm glad I'm back too.
Thank you guys very much and everybody stay healthy and Bob, glad you're, you're on the mend.
Thank you. Thank you. Good seeing you, Bob.
Thank you. Nice seeing Bob again.
Thanks, guys. Nice, it's good to be here.
I'm glad you're back too, Bob. Thank you very much.
Who is that? Who's that?
That's Vince Mace.
Who?
Vince Mace was just talking to Bob.
I just want to welcome you back, Bob, and I want to thank the town council for working with.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, guys. I really, I really appreciate that.
Okay, just so council members don't leave this, you know, other people can leave, but we still have a few things that we have to finalize on this.
Yeah, the, the next, the next thing, if everybody's ready to move on, is finalizing, finalizing the budget 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Last.
I, I think before we do that, the big thing that we're going to have to decide is what we're going to do with the referendum because that's going to dictate some of our other motions as far. So we were talking, you know, we left it open as to who are going to have a referendum or not. And if we do have a referendum, it, it has to be by ballot and it would follow the absentee ballot procedure.
I'm going to leave for a minute. I'll be right back.
So.
But I can hear you.
Just need, we need to decide what we're going to do because that's going to dictate some of our other motions that we have to do.
Well, what can Lisa, is, can Lisa work on that now or is she still in quarantine?
No, she can, she can work on it, but the thing with the absentee ballot, doing it by absentee ballot. It's, it's going to cost more money because we, and the procedure for the town residents, are they're going to have to request an absentee ballot and then it has to be mailed to them and then they have to mail it back or drop it off.
Right, and, yeah, just to, just to jump in, Rose, I believe Lisa is on the call and the two registrars were invited for the Zoom meeting as well. So this might be an opportunity, time for the council to, to ask those questions of them directly. But, yeah, Lisa is, it, it won't be back until, I hope, the 29th. She'll be back. So Lisa, you're, you're muted.
If we decide to go to referendum, we have to.
Yes, I'm here.
Tonight because it has to go to the printer tomorrow.
Yeah, there's a, there's certain, very tight timeframes and Lisa is unmuted and she can hear us, so you can kind of walk us through that.
Yes, that's correct. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yes, I would have to send everything to the printer tomorrow to get the ballots on time.
And then can you just review what the procedure is for the absentee ballot?
Sure. Basically what you just said, Rose, is absolutely correct. Anybody who was wishing to vote in a budget referendum would have to request an absentee ballot so they have to fill out an application first. We do have a link on the website so they could download the application and mail it to us. We would then check it, you know, check to make sure they're voters and then we would mail it, a ballot to the voter. The voter would then vote the ballot and either drop it off or mail it back. We would, given the pandemic, we would ask that they mail it if they could. But we did discuss having some sort of Dropbox maybe once a week outside of Town Hall. The problem we have right now is the camera that was located on the building that would show the front door, like the door, the entrance for, the main entrance for Town Hall. I believe it's broken, Mike, but you do have a replacement. It would need to be put up?
Oh, yes. Yes, they have a replacement. It has to be programmed and mounted.
Okay.
Can that be done in the timeframe prior to ballots being dropped off?
That should be possible, yes.
I think we want the answer to be, it will be done. Otherwise, there's no point in going forward with this.
No, I, I, I am in favor of not going forward with it, but the, the person who's doing the programming is currently on quarantine. So I'm not sure when he's going to be out. So all, all things being perfect, it's a no-brainer, yes. Given the current circumstances, I would say probably not.
Is, I just have a question. Is it the side entrance or the front one on the circle?
Side entrance, which is our main entrance.
All right. Is there a camera on that front one by the circle?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Okay.
There's a person pointing out the front door.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, it's internal, not, not external.
But does it be done at the police department or cannot be done dropping off at the police department where there would be cameras? where there would be cameras?
No, the ballots would need to come to my office, so no, that wouldn't be an option.
I'm sure we could find somebody else to program that cam.
Okay.
With all the people...
I mean, the other option would be no drop-off, and they could just mail them.
Well, if you have a drop-off box, what's, what's the process for keeping its integrity?
We would be, yeah, we would be borrowing the drop-off box, it would be under the camera, so it would only be outside of town hall, it's a movable drop-off, and the camera would be watching it, we could empty it, it would be locked, it would only be outside, 8:30 to 4:30 would have to be taken in each night and placed back outside, so that the ballots could be taken out, and we would keep an eye on it, we would have to, uh, remove the ballots and lock them in the vault until, um, budget referendum day, when they could be counted.
Do the envelopes have paid postage on them?
If they drop them off, no, if, oh, you mean when we mail them out?
Yeah, the return one.
Return envelopes? No, no.
That's, that's the issue, so absentee ballot, they would have to have stamps or go through the post office to buy stamps or at a store or whatever, and so, you know, the question becomes, at a .0-mill rate increase, do we want to go through all of this, or do we want to invoke the executive order of the governor and not have a referendum?
I have a question, did Mike get any comments from, for the, we let the public hearing open, did anybody make any comments about the budget?
There, there was one, um, no, it was, it was lumped into the, um, school, a lot of, a lot of the, um, requests are in respect to the, uh, school capital project, the high school. I have not seen any, uh, specific to the budget hearing process, and that would be, thank you for raising that, Marie, because that, that would be another, another issue that the council would have to mo- move to, uh, close the public hearing as well. But I have not seen any, any comments.
I kind of agree that it's a, it's a zero, what is it again, 0.8?
0.8.
That, you know, it's almost zero, I mean, how much, maybe we do use the governor's...
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll make the, I'll make the motion that we go with the governor's executive order, and we do not do a referendum with grand authority.
I'll second that.
Well, there's, there's a whole motion that has to be read, but that's the consensus of the, the council, that we want to do that, and that will predicate some of the motions that have to come.
Sounds good to me. I agree.
Um, so just...
Okay, where, where are we here?
So I, one, one of the things you might, as you prepare the, or, or look at the resolution, Vin Marino had, had prepared in, in preparation in case, um, you, you might want to just back up to, before you go to the resolution, to back up and make a motion to close the, the public hearing.
I make that motion.
I'll, I'll second that.
Uh, I think it was made by, a motion was made by Marie, I don't know who seconded it. I didn't get it.
I did, Bob, Lou.
Oh, Lou. Thank you, Lou.
You're welcome, Bob.
I must add most of that, Counselor who moved?
Marie and Lou. Marie...
Diamond moved, seconded by...
Paternoster.
Paternoster. Close the public hearing.
Correct.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you.
Okay, so now...
And if I, if I, sorry, if I could just, again, I, I, Lisa had reminded me, uh, I believe there's two more cleanup issues with respect to the minutes. I, I think you had done a motion, uh, for, uh, I thought you had done a motion on, um, setting the May 19th referendum, all those dates, and the, um, motion, uh, for the drive-through referendum, and a motion for the referendum on May 19th, so, um, I think a simple motion to rescind those would help clean up the minutes.
I make a motion to rescind all motions related to having a budget referendum held in May. Does that work?
Perfect.
Any who's seconded?
I second it.
Oh, Marie, okay. Motion made by, by Rose, seconded by Marie, Michelle.
Okay, so I have a motion by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Diamond, to rescind all motions to hold budget referendums in May. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Thank you.
Okay, so now I think, Bob, we're back to the agenda to adopt the budget. And if we're finished, or we're finished with the budget, and we've come to a consensus on where we're at, so we have to formally adopt it.
Okay, so we're finalizing, uh, the budget, is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number three, finalizing budget, uh, 2020, 2021 fiscal year.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council hereby adopts the proposed operating budget for the 2020-21 fiscal year as amended, and recommends the same, um, well, we're not doing a budget referendum here, so...
To the, to the, to the vote of the council?
Since what you'd be doing is going straight to the resolution under Executive Order, 7, 7I, Section 13, because you're not going out to referendum, you're not required to go to referendum.
So, so first we'll adopt it, and then we'll go to the resolution about the referen- I'll just, let me just...
What I'll, I'll need in order to complete the resolution is just the, uh, the number for the budget and the mill rate.
And I need you to speak slowly.
Okay, just, so...
I'm sorry.
So, is, Anthony, is the budget number 53,891,545?
Exactly.
Okay, and the mill rate would be 33,54?
Correct.
So are those the numbers I fill in on the resolution that was sent, Vin?
Uh, Vin's resolution, yeah.
Okay, but do we have to adopt the budget first and then do the resolution?
Well, the, the resolution...
Does your resolution combine both of those actions, Vin?
That is, that is correct, under the resolution, you're authorized, you're authorizing, functionally, the, the, the resolution, the executive order authorizes the legislative body to, uh, to empower the budget-making authority to adopt the budget in newer referendum. In North Branford, since the legislative body is the budget-making authority, the way that I structured the resolution is that, in accordance with the executive order, uh, and the authority granted thereunder, you're adopting the budget, so...
Okay, so I'll, so I'll just read the resolution that was sent, and that will take care of both actions. So, it, it's a little lengthy, um, Michelle, you don't have to worry about getting word for word, we'll just send you this, so you can include it. So, "Town of North Branford, resolution of Town Council in accordance with Executive Order Number 7I, Section 13. Whereas on March 10th, 2020, Governor Lamont issued a declaration of public health and civil preparedness emergencies, proclaiming a state of emergency throughout the state of Connecticut as a result of the coronavirus disease 2019, COVID-19 outbreak in United States, and confirmed spread in Connecticut. And whereas pursuant to such declaration, Governor Lamont has issued 30-day executive orders to suspend or modify statutes and to take other actions necessary to protect public health and safety, and to mitigate the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, on March 21st, 2020, Governor Lamont issued Executive Order Number 7I, wherein he suspended the in-person budget adoption requirements for municipalities, and whereas Executive Order Number 7I, Section 13, authorized the Town Council, which is the legislative body of the Town of North Branford, and the budget-making authority for the Town of North Branford, to adopt a budget for the July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2021 fiscal year, and to set a mill rate sufficient, in addition to the other estimated yearly income of the Town of North Branford, and in addition to such revenue surplus, if any, as may be appropriated, not only to pay the expenses of the municipality for said fiscal year, but also to absorb the revenue deficit of such town, in, if any, at the beginning of said fiscal year, without holding votes required by charter, or without complying with any in-person budget adoption requirements, including but not limited to annual town meetings requiring votes, referendum, and special town meetings. And whereas Executive Order Number 7I, Section 13, further provides that in so acting, the budget-making authority of the municipality comply with public meeting requirements, since the requirements set forth in Executive Order 7B, and so thereby take all reasonable steps to publicize the draft municipal budget for said fiscal year, and to receive public comments thereon, including but not limited to publishing draft budgets on the website, and providing an email address or other means for the public to submit timely comments on the proposed budget. And whereas, on April 1st, 2020, Governor Lamont issued Executive Order Number 7S, wherein in Section 7 of Executive Order 7S, the governor stated that nothing in this order shall be construed to prohibit a municipality from conducting any in-person meeting, approval process, or referendum, provided such municipality first consults with local or state public health officials and conducts such meeting, approval process, or referendum in a way that significantly reduces the risk of transmission of COVID-19. And whereas, the Town Council finds that under the current public health emergency caused by COVID-19, and how that virus is spread, there is no reasonable way to conduct an in-person referendum that significantly reduces the risk of trans- transmission of COVID-19 among those who would be assembled. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Town Council of the Town of North Branford that in accordance with the authority granted by Executive Order Number 7I, Section 13, the Town Council hereby adopts a budget July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2021 fiscal year, in the amount...
Rose, before you get to the mill rate, the mill rate's going to change, because they have to change the pilot payment, because the pilot's based on the current mill rate, so it's going to be 33.58, not .54.
33.58, okay, and what was the budget, 53 million?
891,545.
Uh, adopts a budget for the, for July 1st, 2020, to June 30th, 2021 fiscal year, in the amount of 53,891,545, which amount is sufficient, in addition to the other estimated yearly income of the town, and in addition to such revenue surplus, if any, as may be appropriated, not only to pay the expenses of the town for said fiscal year, but also to absorb the revenue deficit, if any, at the beginning of said fiscal year, without complying with any in-person budget adoption requirements, including but not limited to referendum, and sets a mill rate in the amount of 33.58, dated at North Branford, Connecticut, this 23rd day of April. That's a lot of legalese to say that we're adopting the budget.
Could you please repeat that?
Did you get all that?
Not a problem.
Michelle, you should have that in your email.
I, I received it, thank you. That's why I'm smiling again.
Good.
Second?
Second?
Not to throw a, a monkey wrench in, but, um, have, have, we haven't discussed the collection rate. Are we predicating the collection rate on the same 98.5?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't change it. We didn't make that motion, uh, because we just left it as where it was.
Okay, leaving it at 98.5?
Yep, the way the budget.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Rose made the motion, I don't know who seconded it, couldn't get my attention. So, Mike, Mike, uh, seconded it. Any, any discussion? Everybody happy with it?
Nice job.
Yeah, I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions?
Very good.
Thank you.
Anthony, any, any other housekeeping items or anything we might have overlooked?
Uh, just a question for Vinny. Vinny, typically after the fact, we have a motion that authorizes the town manager to sign the rate book. Uh, do we still need a separate motion for that, at that first meeting in May?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we all set?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, next is, uh, we have ratification, the Town Council recommend the budget.
Yeah.
We did that already.
Yeah, I think we're all set.
Okay. Uh, next is approved of advisory budget referendum question, 2020 to 2021 fiscal year.
Don't have that.
No. We did all that.
All set?
Yeah, and six.
Well, six we did already, so the only thing that's left is a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Like to thank you all for your patience and, uh, all of this technology. Um, it's not, I know it's not easy, and I thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I would triple your salaries.
Nice job, everyone.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Bye.
Be safe.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.